Good job.
Who is she?
Oh, yeah.
No, I don't think so, I guess.
Oh, no, you know what, I, uh, I put music for that thing. We're putting all the last thing for you.
Okay.
You know, man.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty-four years.
Yeah.
Why are we filming? I like that.
I don't really think it's like.
Why not two chairs?
That's okay, this one right here, I think Charlie's coming. Yeah.
Two little chairs, I don't know.
What did she say? She was excited to hear what I said.
Yeah.
It's okay. Right, I'm gonna ask you.
No, I'm just, I'm really.
How about you? My favorite baby. All the time, they're talking, kinda?
While my, on my watch, I showed my hair, it said loud, all those lines, "Come out." And you're all loud and bright. You really are.
Oh, wait, I was sorry.
It's funny, it's funny.
Yeah, there was that.
Oh, you also did have a little music.
It's just the process.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, you know, I did, I, I did, uh, sixteen thousand sketch.
Do we what?
Well, my vision, my passion, you know, it's me saying something. I got a lot of. I just saw someone in the house, you know, because he goes like, oh, right like that. He's someone that's came down, and he comes to you, and he's like, oh, hello, you. From the circle, you're the chat, you're the part, you're the. I don't follow, it's like, hey, there's an. Well, this girl is a skinny. But I've got all these, you know, fish and cheese, and that, pretty much.
Please stand with pleasure. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undeniably, with liberty, justice, and all. Please remain standing in honor of serving the military. Great, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Make a motion to approve the previous board minutes of November third and November seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five, or a second?
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Suffolk County Police, come up please, and thank you to. Thank you for coming tonight. I guess the big thing from the village was the stabbing that occurred on November nineteenth of Orinoco.
Of course.
I don't know if you were one of the officers there?
I was.
Yeah.
Uh, there was one arrest that was made, um, there is an ongoing investigation with multiple other suspects.
Find, did, when people knew each other, it wasn't a random act of a gang going through the village looking to fight somebody? So that was like my biggest concern to get out to the residents that that's what happened.
They both knew each other.
Yeah. All right. I don't know if anything else, did you have? Nah, just, I mean, obviously, we know what happened on the nineteenth. What, what's, uh, the varsity on Orinoco the twenty-fourth?
I don't have that too familiar with. My notes here, it is listed as active, uh, and under investigation. The male that stole some liquor from, uh, one of the bars.
All right, behind the, uh, behind the, uh, private ward is it?
Yeah. And, uh, his red house, active and under investigation.
Do you know if he had cameras? He had, they used to have cameras back there.
Uh, they do have cameras, it says, but only has a description of him and what he was wearing, uh, nothing physical, but more so just the clothing they have on. So I imagine with the investigation that they are looking at other cameras, they have prior to him getting there and after.
Right, and you guys haven't been getting any calls about cars at all? Most people going into unlocked cars.
It's a lot of the Bright Waters area, I'm not too familiar, but I'm one of the officers I can honestly say I get them here and there.
Yeah.
Almost like a never ending thing, so many places that we could be at one time.
First thing you ask them, did you lock your doors? And they, they forgot.
And for people that leave the keys in their car online, that's, that's really a big mistake.
Does the board have anything else to ask the officer?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, just like, is there ever an uptick as far as like the forge pirates and stuff like that at the holiday season?
I can imagine there is going to be an uptick, um, I know that within our precinct, it's, uh, being broadcasted to us on a daily basis that we need to be more vigilant and be more, uh, show more omnipresence in the area, um, and just notice suspicious vehicles in the area that don't really look like, you know, it's hard to tell, but, you know, if you see a little suspicion, maybe look into it, uh, they offer our heads not to us on a daily basis.
So suspicion on your end, not if we see a car that looks suspicious?
I mean, if you see something suspicious, and as well as people that live in the area, uh, they can always call and we can look into what is going on. You know, license plates are a good thing for us, you know, when people get license plates, then we can really look into where the car is coming from. And maybe it could be something that's tied to a crime pattern, but that vehicle still can help us out.
Do you think our speed humps are helping or hurting speed in the village?
It's hit or miss, because it really depends on the operator of the vehicles. You know, I, I, I noticed the ones on ones are, they're, they're dark, um, could be an issue, but that's again, it really depends on the operators of these vehicles that, you know, they're themselves, they're driving at high speed, you know.
It's good local entertainment to watch the people bounce the ball.
See, pretty much.
All right, thank you. Does anybody in the audience have any questions for the officer? Bobby Holt is a good question, just. No, thank you again, thank you for coming.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Be careful.
All right, report to the mayor and the trustees, uh, Deputy Mayor Quater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, well, everybody, happy Thanksgiving, uh, we're now getting, returning from Thanksgiving to Christmas, and when Christmas comes, then we start talking about budgets, uh, we're kind of like this halfway period of our fiscal year, so we now need to figure out what monies we have left to finish in projects, what projects we want to do with twenty twenty-six, uh, we have some roads that need to be done, how we're gonna handle those, uh, we have some staffing changes, uh, so we gotta address those monies, and, uh, the biggest one of all is, uh, our, our liability this year is gonna be over four hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna make up more than twelve percent of our total. So, uh, and that's something that we do not have any negotiating skills in, so we're gonna have to jockey money around, um, we will be coming, we've come off one of the bonds, we still have another bond that we have to pay, so we are pretty much a very strong place, I think we're in a good area as far as what our capital requirement is from the bank, as far as what we have to have in reserve, uh, I think we're in a good spot there, uh, more than six percent unless, what was it, less than fifteen, twenty? Twenty, so I think we're at twelve or thirteen right now, so we're in a good spot there, so we have a rainy day fund, and there's always things in the village that can be upgraded and improved, uh, the mayor and I, over the, his tenure, have chipped away at a lot of things, uh, too many to mention, but, uh, we can continue to do that as long as we can. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, great. Lucy Bitter?
Uh, labor mentioned with the police officer here, the November ninth incident on Orinoco, it was high school age kids who were involved in a targeted attack on resident of Bright Waters. Outside of that, which was also mentioned, it's Christmas season, there'll be lots, lots of Amazon packages and other packages showing up on our porches, uh, let's be extra vigilant, if we do see any incidents, please report them to Suffolk County Police Department. On top of that, also, there has been some reports of people checking car doors, in driveways, locker doors, and any incidents, please report them to Suffolk County Police Department. Speed humps, we've had many positive emails in the village about them, uh, as far as what the mayor was saying about, you know, whether or not Suffolk Police Department thinks it's helping with speed, when, when I spoke to the police department before any of this was done, we looked over the last five years and they've written zero speeding tickets in the village's records. So, you know, it wa, it wasn't being enforced by the police department, and happy to say it seems like the speeding has come down quite a bit with the speed humps.
Okay, great. Uh, trustee Delvecchio?
Uh, over the weekend, we had one of our biggest and busiest days, um, Saturday, we had, um, pictures of Santa at the cabin, and that evening, Santa came beautifully down the canal to a, a group of adoring fans for the Christmas tree lighting, um, just a few thank yous, I want to thank Bright Waters Beautification, the Bay Shore High School Performance Choir, the Bright Waters Choir, and the Village Deli for all of their hard work to get that event off the ground, um, when it comes to the pictures of Santa, I just want to thank the Darubos, Mrs. Flotteron, all the other volunteers that were in the cabin trying to make all of our children stop crying, and then, um, also, if you were there, uh, Kismet Coffee was out front, and that was just a wonderful addition to the event that, at the cabin, it made, um, staying at the playground a little bit warmer and a little bit cozier, and Mr. Pace, thank you for your music, it really brought everybody into the holiday spirit as well. This Wednesday, December third, um, the Bright Waters Historical Society will be having their hol, their first holiday market at the cabin, should be a great event, we have a lot of artisans from the village who will be there, and then, um, we are also working on getting ready for light the night on December fourteenth, if you have not yet bought your kits, they're everywhere, make sure you grab them, that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, trustee Melty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Village DPW, we've been very busy this went, uh, this November, um, they did regular maintenance, uh, was done, fall cleanups of mulch and leagues, trash pickup from the village, we set the goals and right of ways, the fallen locations were blown out and winterized, village hall, the circle, Gilbert Park, Walker Beach in the canal, uh, Walker Beach bathroom painted, including the green exterior, they decorated the circle for Veterans Day, installed new speed hump signs on Windsor Avenue, cleaned up trees and ranches after, uh, many high wind events, and replaced a stop sign on Richland and Lucipia that was crushed by a fallen tree, replaced a stop sign on Concourse East and Marine Court due to a motor vehicle accident on November twelfth, snowplows that were prepared for winter season, gutters on Lucipia Park, cattle were cleaned, uh, trash and debris was removed from Sunrise Highway, Clover Leaf and surrounding triangles, they assisted with the Suffolk County Police Department with removal of a deer that was caught in the fence between Walker Beach and Captain's Walk, and in working with Wellsback Electric on a solution to hook up the light poles at two twenty-five hours road on the Ackerson side, there was no feeder, uh, ever installed by the contractor, but it was a very busy month for the DPW, and they did a well done job, thank you, Mike, and you're great.
That's it, that's great. Okay, great. As far as my report, I just want to add on the, uh, photos with Santa, Judy Sally has been coordinating that for probably twenty years now, and, uh, she keeps saying she's gonna stop and she keeps going, so as long as she keeps going, it makes our lives a lot easier, her and then Nikki Thaw too, Nikki Thaw does a lot of the decorating, so I want to thank the both of them. Uh, just an auditor's update, they're in, they've been at the village for four months, auditing the last two years, so I don't know how long it takes to audit two years, but they're here four months, and one day we'll find out, some reporting. We've got, uh, three plumbing prices now for the bathrooms at Lucipia Park, so we'll be looking at that again and trying to get that done over the winter, ready for next spring. Still about twelve boats in the canal, uh, which is pretty late for us, we're gonna be sending them love notes tomorrow, give them a couple more days, but the boats have gotta be out of the canal. And I just really want to thank all the committees, all the people who help out in the village all the time, the very active Art Council, we have Callan McCores, this is our, our new Historical Society Beautification, so there's a lot of people who do help in the village and ma, and make it work, so I just want to thank them. And that's all I have for my report. Next thing on the agenda, uh, the end of this month, uh, what's her name, she retired? Oh, Jeannie Parker.
Oh, Jeannie.
Okay. But, uh, Jeannie Parker's been here about ten years, she's the deputy clerk, she's retiring, and we're gonna be appointing Kristen French to that position, uh, Kristen is our court clerk right now, she does two days a week and nights, and she's gonna be moving into that position, uh, she is a village resident, she knows the village, she knows the issues, and, uh, we think she's gonna move into there very, very smoothly, and we'd just like to welcome her aboard, so do you want to wave to the crowd, Kristen? Okay, there, thank you. So, I'd like to make a motion to hire, uh, Kristen French, full-time deputy clerk, treasurer with a salary of sixty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-three, do I have a second?
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next thing is, uh, we had a, uh, a petition about requesting a stop sign on the, uh, in the corner of Ackerson and Iroquois, so I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing to consider adaptation of Local Law seven dash two zero two five to amend one-one-nine dash four stop intersection designated, each proposed section shall be added to one-one dash one-four as follows, uh, Ackerson Boulevard and Iroquois for traffic eastbound on Iroquois Drive, Ackerson Boulevard and Iroquois for traffic westbound on Iroquois Drive, make a motion to open a public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody on the board, was anybody here to speak in favor of these? We did get a petition from them with about twelve signatures. All right, so none of them are here, is anybody on the board want to, uh, make a comment on this?
I was just, there was one resident told me that they were not in favor of it, but I told them they should come to the meeting, and they're not here, so.
Okay. And I think they live about three houses from the corner?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else on the board? Any comment?
Let's do more stop signs.
Anybody resident would like to make a comment on Ackerson Boulevard and Iroquois stop signs? Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor of approving the stop signs, make a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, those are good. All right. Next thing is with the fire department, we don't have to officially call for a public hearing, but we've been getting some pretty steady increases from the fire department, and it's always nice to have them come and kind of explain to us what those costs have to go for, we do support the fire department, the fire department is always there when we need them, for their Memorial Day, Halloween parade, they were just there delivering Santa for us, and, uh, you know, if, if we need them, they're there, so, uh, we do appreciate them, but, you know, the, the increases have been starting to, starting to head up, so next month, they'll be coming here to do a presentation, and, uh, we just want to officially make a motion to call for a public hearing, and it's January fifth, two thousand and twenty-six, so the date on your.
It's wrong.
January is wrong, and it's January fifth, two thousand and six, and seven thirty, to adopt the two thousand and twenty-six spatial, spatial fire district protection contract with the village of four hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and fourteen, current contract is three hundred and eighty-nine, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars, estimate insurance of twelve thousand, so the total increase is, is what Nicole, about thirty to forty thousand?
Uh, yeah.
With their insurance. All right, I make a motion to call for the public hearing next month, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next thing is, uh, last year they did this for the first time, the Challenger Athletics. Challenger Athletics is an organization run by, uh, village residents, and, uh, they like to get this for kids with special needs, and they just like to get, uh, have a little activities all the time in the village, they did this last year, it's more like a, a walk, I don't think they had too many kids ran last year, I think it was more of a walk, right? Yeah.
That's involved families and all.
Yeah, it gets all the families involved, it is the same night as Light the Night, which it could be good, could be bad, but we'll, we'll find out, but they meet by the library, they go down South Winter, and they come up the canal, and, uh, I think with all the luminaries and all, it should be a, should be a busy night in the village. Make a motion to approve the public assembly permit to, uh, applicant Liz DeSimone from Challenger Athletics to hold a third annual run walk Sunday, December fourteenth, from four to eight, at the field next to the library, and at the end at the gazebo, I make a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next thing is, uh, make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, that guy, do I have a second?
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Anything in the, if you're following along, the major expenditures for the month are in, are in all your packets. All right, uh, before I open to the public, does anybody on the board want to add anything? No, we didn't, we didn't put, we'll have to wait for next month. Wait for next month on that, so, uh, you know, it's gonna be done over the winter anyway, for next spring. All right, make a motion to open the, open the public hearing, do I have, I mean, open the public comment, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, would anybody like to, uh, start? John, in the back?
A couple of years ago, the village had Toys for Tots as a drop off place, the village was impressive, they're very generous people in this village, it would be nice if we could do that again, for one reason, I believe that the people in the village would be much more involved if they could drop this stuff off here instead of going, who knows where. I'm quite sure it worked out fine last time, it would work out fine this time, and it makes a difference to this one kid, it's worth doing.
Yeah, uh, we do it here, do, John, we do do it here through the clerks association, and the people in this village are always super generous, but we, I think we have to make a better effort to get the word out there that. My hearing is what it should be. Yeah, yeah, so we do have it at Village Hall, it's inside the front door.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, I mean, uh, she saw it that time, I mean, the people in the village really came through, but they have to know about it, I mean.
Yeah.
You talk to these people, and they say, I didn't know you could do that and stuff, I mean, no one wants to have to run down to the Sunrise Highway and Comac Road to drop stuff off and stuff, and it would be nice, but the big thing is to make, uh, village people know about it, and you really see how generous the people in this little joint.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent, we'll make sure we advertise that more, please, okay, when is the due date on that, like, two weeks from now?
December eighth.
All right, so, all right, we'll start advertising now a little more, John.
Okay, and when can we start dropping things off?
Anytime.
Anytime now?
Yeah, we started them.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, we started it about a week ago, so we, we, it has been on the flyer, we're on one of the flyers that we sent out, but, you know, again, there's a lot of information on our stuff, so it gets lost sometimes, so.
Beautiful.
No, we'll make that a little, we'll send, start sending, uh, anybody else? Mark?
Uh, when is Jeannie's last day?
March twenty-first.
Yeah.
Oh, the end of the year?
Yeah.
She can't even catch a break, yeah? No, she's catching a break. It's fine. Anybody else? Call, uh, call up.
Carl Fraser, I'm fourteen years old, I'm a little bit. I'm, I have to talk about this choir, everyone's heard about that boy's village choir, I'm a member of that choir, and, uh, we've enjoyed singing together for the last eight months or so. We, as you know, sang at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and we enjoyed it thoroughly, and I'm sure people who attended did the same as we approached the holiday seasons. We're, I'm here representing the group, asking for assistance, I should say, try to say this, that the approval of this group was given by our mayor and the board, but we need some help from the board, and let me say what we need, first of all, we are inviting people to join the group, it's a great group, great camaraderie, we've been, uh, enjoying each other's company, and it's a great place to be when we get together and sing, so we're inviting, just spread the word, we need additional members to join and sing with us, this is our choir, the Bright Waters Village Choir, the other thing is, we need a choral director and a guitar player, we've been practicing and performing using karaoke instrumental music, that's not good enough, we have been seeking and asking folks around, uh, to help us with that, the choral director, we've had people say they could, but they want to get paid to do it, so right now, we don't have anyone, and we are looking, so I'm here petitioning the board on behalf of the group to help us with any level of funding that would get us what we need to get to the next level of our performing, and I'm gonna leave it there for the time, are there any questions?
Well, one of our problems is, like, right now, the Historical Society is a nonprofit organization, they raise their money, we support them by adding them to our flyers and all, same with the Art Council, the Art Council is not a nonprofit, or they almost operate independently, and we don't give them any funds at all, like, they have use of the cottage, of the cabin, like, you guys have use of the cabin when you want for parade, but other than that, we don't support them with, with anything either, so financially, so as far as beautification, yes, we do the flowers with, with them, but that's really a quasi-billage group. Now, the discussion was, you know, if we writing a check, who are we writing the check to?
Whomever, whomever is a person or persons that is providing this service.
So that would almost be a employee or subcontractor to the village, then? What was, what was the issue?
Well, it would be a municipal program that's incorporated into our budget.
Well, okay, so now, when Chris Pace DJs at some of our stuff, and we give him, we pay him to do that, okay, because he's providing us with a service, if the choral director or somebody's providing him.
This is on a regular current, is this like a weekly payment? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking out loud, I'm not really sure which way legit, which way people can go.
Well, it'd be, Chris is legally providing us a service, which we're guaranteeing payment for, the choral chorus would have to provide us a service that we could then pay as an invoice, so that, they might have to figure out how they would do that, that's on their side of things, not our side of things, so they would have to provide a service to the village that we would compensate them for, having a, having a chorus and just singing, it could provide a service, but it would have to be contracted, so we can't just give you a thousand dollars and say, all right, well, in the future, you can do us a service, has to be a service, so if the tree lighting is a service, and you guys build us for that, then we. that, then we'd be able to pay. We'd be able to run through.
But who are you paying?
Uh, that, that, great question.
We have to talk, Carl, we'll try to, we'll try to support and do what we can, but we, you see I'm saying things out loud, and it's like, okay, who's the check? How do you spell your last name? Carl, you know what I mean? So we've had these ordinance here for four months, so I'm sure that would red flag right away. So... Have you guys thought of doing any kind of, Carl, have you guys thought of doing any kind of fundraising, or doing some kind of a, anything?
No, we haven't, we haven't considered that. But we need to get to the next level of performing. I mean, even thought about taking winnings out of our own pockets to, if we get someone to, I mean, we're almost, I wouldn't say desperation mode, but we're serious about getting this thing going and improving on it. And because it's part of the Bright Waters Village, on the opposite, under the umbrella of the Bright Waters Village, we felt that we can make an appeal to you to get whatever it is, however we can. It doesn't matter how, if we have to supplement it, we have to go to our own pockets, depending on what the cost would be for a choral director, we're willing to do that. So...
So the issue, Carl, is again, as village trustees and the mayor, we cannot just write you a blank check. Because we would be then using winnings inappropriately, and we would get, I don't like to be in the paper, okay? I don't want to be in the paper. This would definitely be that. If you guys create, create a service for us, like the tree lighting, or a different venue where you're going to be there, and the village is hiring you to do that, then we could reunit. We could pay you for that. But we can't just give you a check and say, "Best of luck with this." That, we just can't do that.
So if a choral director comes and provides a service...
Right, which would mean it would have to be benefit the village. So that would be, you would have to do a concert or something of that nature. It would have to be something that, like, like Chris, when he does, when he does the music, it's providing a service that benefits the village residents, then we're able to invoice for that.
Alright, talk to the group.
Otherwise, we can't just do that. I mean, just...
Yeah, we're going to keep the conversation going.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against it, Carl. It's just, we got to do it the right way.
Mr. Fraser, you said you're looking for a choral director, and you're asking for funding, but you never mentioned an amount, an amount.
Because we don't have one yet, so we have no idea of what they will charge.
Okay, so my next question to you is, what does a choral director do versus a tenant? You know, what, what does a choral director do?
Choral director helps us organize in terms of the music, in terms of singing in different, different groups, uh, how do I say, different groups. We group the singers to sing differently, so we're more coordinated in terms of the melodies. Right now, we're listening to karaoke or the singing of a certain song, for example, and we listen to what's coming out of that artist, and mimicking that artist, and then doing the karaoke version to sing. A choral director will be able to help us, guide us through the various, um...
You need a coach.
Yeah, and of course, a guitar player, because, again, we had one, but couldn't commit.
Alright, Carl, we're going to continue the conversation with us, and we'll get back to you and Dottie back in the near, near future, okay?
I should add one more thing. We are going to perform on the third, Wednesday, here in the cabin. So I encourage everyone to come and join the holiday festival, and also sit back and listen to the sounds of the Bright Waters Choir.
I would suggest you to ask for donations to create an LLC. Won't waste a lot of money to do that, but that would be your first step. So we could, as a village, could put it out to the residents that you guys are going to do that, and I would ask you to ask the people for donations to create your LLC.
Well, Carl, right, we can't...
We can't put out?
We can't ask people to donate, but we can put out their flyers.
They're good. They're going to be performing. Yeah. Yeah, we can tell them they're accepting donations, correct?
Yes, anything that...
They just share their flyers.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything that can assist us with this effort.
How many people are in your group?
Right now, about seventeen. And not everyone are residents of Bright Waters. So trying to recruit people far and wide, and most of us are within Bright Waters.
That's great. We appreciate you guys coming. It worked out great after Santa. Boom, you guys were there. And, no, it was great. Thank you. And they've done, they've done the Ice Cream Social, they did Memorial Day. They just did this also? No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Carl.
Anybody else? Joe, do you have something?
Yeah, I guess I was curious. How many summoners has the night time security people written in the village the last few months or?
I don't know. Since pro-protection started?
Yes.
We'll have to, do you know of any, or no?
I don't know offhand. I...
Can you call them tomorrow, Joe?
They're a good amount. I mean, I would say nightly, some nights, they could write as many as ten tickets.
I mean, could you, can you, you want to call tomorrow? Are you in tomorrow, Kristin?
I am in Wednesday, but I can, I can run a report and get all those numbers.
Yeah, if you have a call, we'll be happy to give it to you. So, the thing that's nice with the guys at night is, anytime they're on, they see somebody walk in the street, they stop and talk to them, and then they, they clock it on their report. So they'll say, you know, if two people sitting in a car in the park, they approach the people, and they'll stop people and just talk to them. So they're, that's what's kind of nice to see, that they're always moving. Every day, we get a GPS report of where they, where they've been, and we get a little report of any incident. So, so far, you know, so far, we're pretty happy with it. I love the fact that it's their car, their gas. It's not putting any wear and tear on our stuff. That'll let ours last a little longer. So, alright, alright. But please call, Joe, okay? They'll tell you. Anybody else? Chris?
I have a bunch of things.
Name, address.
Chris Pace, still living at five oh six North Windsor.
All in favor of a two-minute?
No, no, seriously. I didn't say anything last minute. This is, like, built up. Alright, so, Charlotte's not here, right? So I guess, one of the things is, I brought up a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, about renaming what tonight is. In a village of more than three thousand, it's kind of sad that this is who comes to the meetings.
Hey, well, we have two hundred watching at home, right?
No, we don't. I've seen, I've talked to Facebook. We don't have that.
Does it work?
I, I think if we named it something like "The Business of Bright Waters," perhaps maybe some more people would...
We actually have good attendance compared to many villages.
I...
Limoners has twenty-five thousand people, and they have this amount of people.
Well, we're not, we're not Limoners. So it'd be nice to have some younger people to come here, because the age of the people that come to the meetings...
If you come up with a good name, we'd be happy to hear it.
Yes, "Business of Bright Waters."
Number two.
Issues from, I brought this up before. When we bring up issues in the, like, in this part of the meeting, it would be nice to actually bring up to the next meeting, "Hey, we spoke about these things, and this was the follow-up." Because when we don't, things get, fall through the cracks. Which brings me to my next thing.
Do you have an example?
I do, actually. I'd like to see a protocol of, many times, you bring something up that's not actually Bright Waters business. We'll say, oh, it's a county thing, or that's a state, whatever it is. Would it be possible to have a protocol where, "Hey, this was brought up at the meeting," and then our two representatives get contacted and say, "Hey, this, this is not us, but can you look, look into this?" Here's my example. And I know, John, you've had this as well. When you go to the service road, you're heading north on, on Windsor, and you come to the service road, the south service road of Sunrise, the right-hand turning lane, the new one that you put in, the turning lane that comes south on, on Windsor. People get in that lane, and then go down Hallowes. I've been hit, or almost, to me, almost hit, many times. Not only my car, but also on my bicycle.
They just repaved the...
Exactly.
The lines or that?
Exactly. And that would have been a great time, if we had contacted someone to say, "Hey, this is something you have to think about," when they just repaved that to put the new...
Why don't you call?
Who do I call?
You would have all the stuff at D W.
Is that who it, is that who it is?
Yeah. Or you could Google whose road is that and who I call.
Well, I'm at, I'm at "The Business of Bright Waters" meeting.
Yeah, but you're in the business of trying to micromanage what we do, isn't like...
I'm trying to micromanage. I'm trying to make...
It does sound like that, Chris.
No, well, perhaps, perhaps you're being, perhaps you're being...
Perhaps you're being defensive, because the thing about it is, look, well, then, then I'll be on the opposite.
Is the service road the county, or is that the state? That's the state, right?
Okay, so where does that go to?
State D O T.
So is it me that makes that phone call?
No, but you think the professionals, when they were doing that, would tell them they were wrong? Twice?
I mean, it seems pretty obvious that...
I'll, I'll get you something in writing that I'll put in the next couple of days and see what they say, okay?
Appreciate, appreciate that.
Great.
Okay. Here's my next thing. I have a suggestion, and perhaps the, someone had, if you're not too annoyed right now, maybe to give some feedback on this, being the fact that you have your own foundation, correct? And in doing the lakes over, over the, over the summer, it was amazing how many people were actually just interested in the lakes being cleaned out, just the beautification of the lakes. And other towns or villages, I don't know specifically, have a, a foundation or a group that says, like, "Friends of the Lakes," maybe. And it's privately funded to raise money, to go beyond what the village, village can do. And if we could do something like that, perhaps that can free up some, some money for some other things. And, you know, one hand washes the other type of thing. Like, we have a bunch of speedhumps, and I thank you very much for getting that. It's extremely interesting to watch right outside for my, for my, for my driveway. I mean, it really is. Except for tonight, which I told you, yeah.
I mentioned to Nicole, at five-twenty, the guard that ran around the circle to avoid it. So we'll get our camera, we'll check the cameras.
I mean, it's crazy, right? But literally, there is such a difference. They'll ensure you can see the, see the, see the same thing. And these things take time.
So what's your point? You want us to tell the people on the lakes to form something to raise money, to put towards the lakes?
I want to be something...
You want us to tell people on the lakes to raise their own money, to police in front of them, to approve the lakes?
Well, I have, no...
Because I don't live on the lakes. None of us live on the lakes. Nobody, or Joe lives on the lakes. So Joe, you're in charge of the foundation today.
You're, you're mocking, you're mocking here right now.
I'm not mocking you.
I don't, I don't appreciate that, because, you know, there's a lot of things that I'm not an expert in. When I'm not an expert in this, I'm for Bright Waters. If that's not apparent, then I don't, right?
So you're asking me to form, all the people live on the lakes, and say, "Give me money."
Okay, great. I'll get, I'll get that. Here's my, we have, we have a number of, we have a, please, let me see. Thank you. We have a number of speedhumps right now. When is our fiscal year starting?
June first.
June first, great. So we have, so I would ask that the planning board, or I don't know if the planning board does it, or if the board of trustees does it, in regards to looking for new locations for additional speedhumps, before that time, so that we actually ask, we have that in our budget. Because what's going to happen is, come springtime, when people start to, you know, become more involved, people are going to be asking on other, other places. Like, I was out running just a few days ago, and someone down at Peter's Pot, or whatever the one on the other side of the park is, and someone was flying down that road. They're obviously coming, now they're making their entry, not North Windsor, but in another way. So we're going to need more, more speedhumps. And it really does slow traffic down. That's all I have to say. You guys can make very comments as you want. Thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
Okay. Nothing else? I'll make a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you.